Good morning. Welcome to the September 25th, 2025 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda today, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any members of the audience have cell phones or other electronic devices, they either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. The public hearing on item number one, the approval of the September 4th, 2025 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes is hereby opened. All right, Vince made the motion to approve and Jeff Bailey seconded that motion. Seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a variance request in the Buckingham addition, specific to a building permit request. We recently received a revised site plan, so the requests are going to change. The applicant is in concurrence that this item be continued to your October 9th zoning board of adjustment meeting and will get the correct variance notified and bring you a report specific to it.
All right, Haven made the motion to continue. Vince seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion to continue to October 9th? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Good morning, Chair. Planning Commission Cassie Hayes. Item number three before you is a variance request, 25 VA 15. This is a request to increase the maximum allowed square footage for an on-premises electronic message center sign from 60 square feet to 281.25 square feet. We're at the property located at 413 North Campbell Street. This is the old Kmart location. This property is currently zoned general commercial district with a future land use of mixed-use commercial. Access to this property is off of North Campbell Street, which is a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. What they are proposing to do here is they have recently opened a retail store, Trav's Outfitter, in this location within the existing building and they're proposing to install a two-sided electronic message center sign in the southeast corner of this parking lot. You'll see it down here indicated by this little blue dot. This will be a sign that will feature changing electronic messaging and advertising that's related to the retail store, so promotions, deals, things along those lines. This sign will measure 12 feet 5 inches by 22 feet 5 inches. As you can see in this depiction, that's a total square footage of about 281.25 square feet. It will be constructed on a monopole with a ground clearance of 10 feet and an overall height of 32 and a half feet. This sign is going to be located five feet from the curb edge of the parking lot and positioned so that the messaging faces north-south on East-North, or North Campbell Street, excuse me. So by code, the maximum allowed area for a sign like this is 60 square feet. So this property is 2.85 acres. The size of the building that currently sits on that property is about 40,000 square feet. Trav's Outfitter occupies about 34,000 square feet of that building. There is also an existing monument sign on this property that is pretty substantial in size that can be used to advertise the logos of the businesses that are within that, that multi-tenant park, I guess you could call it. That, the display area of that existing monument sign is about 408 square feet and the total area of that sign is about 672 square feet. In addition, they do have an approved sign permit that was recently approved for 329 square feet of internally illuminated wall signage on this property. So when staff was looking at this one, this electronic message center sign would be an additional advertising method for this retail store and there are those existing signs that are on the property that meet sign code and can be used to reasonably advertise this business. So when we were looking at this request, we were looking at the purpose and intent of that maximum size regulation being to promote traffic safety, maintain community aesthetic and prevent visual clutter and distraction. So overall, staff feels that the size and height of this sign will have an impact on light pollution in this area and also cause a distraction for traffic and drivers in the area. With this being located off of a principal arterial street, North Campbell Street, does experience high daily traffic volume. Additionally, this sign is about 575 feet south of the intersection of North Campbell and East-North Street, which is a busy intersection. So a digital sign of this size near that busy intersection and that busy road does raise concern for traffic safety. There are no other digital signs of this size, height or use in this area. The size and nature of this is not in harmony with the prevailing sign patterns of this area and having a sign that large will contribute negatively to the visual clutter in the area. This is about a 368% increase in size, so that's a pretty substantial deviation, one that we do not generally see. So ultimately, staff is recommending denial of this variance request. Here's a picture of the existing wall signage that has been installed on the building. This is a picture of that existing monument sign that's already there. This is a picture of the signage looking north, or on North Campbell Street. So you can see there's quite a few signs, tall signs, but none of them are digital. And this is looking south on North Campbell Street. The nearest digital sign that I could find was an electronic reader board sign, so within code and displaying text only, not images or graphics. So ultimately, staff is recommending denial of this variance request as it does not appear to be the minimum adjustment necessary and is not in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. I'll stand for any questions and the applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes. So to date, we have not granted any exceptions or variances to deviate from the LED signage allowed square footage. You may notice that there are some billboard LED signs, but those do have to get processed as billboards and those do allow for off-premise signage. And beyond that, all onsite LED has been restricted to that 60-square-foot allotment.
All right. We have a speaker request from, I believe, an agent for the applicant, Tina Napoli Ramirez, if you'd like to address the commission.
Okay, good morning. So there actually is--
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you introduce yourself, like name and relationship?
I'm Tina. I am the project manager for Skyline Signs and Lighting, the install, the installer for this job. There is a sign and, a sign that was approved with a variance that was an electronic message center for the Uptown Rapid and that's 105 square foot. So there has been one that has been, okay, been approved. I understand that, that this is more like a billboard. We are willing to like ask for a smaller square footage of the sign. As far as like it being light pollution, these electronic message centers can have photo cells and timers put on them so that the brightness of the signs can be lowered or brightened or however that you guys want to go about that. If you're like, oh, I don't want it to be too bright, it needs to be dimmer at this time. So with the light pollution, that can be fixed. With the coming down, is this, do I--
Stand by a second a little bit.
Oh, okay. And thank you for all your help with this too. I really appreciate you. All right, there you go. Okay, so this is like coming, like the picture that she showed, coming north up Campbell Street on the opposite side. So the sign would go right here and that would not be visual, like very destructive as you come up to this part of the intersection as you're waiting at the stoplight. Then once again, the sign would go over here and this area is pretty cluttered, yes, and that's why we want to put the sign down further so it wouldn't be such a distraction for drivers. Then I kind of just want to stress the importance of having a bigger electronic message center for Trav's Outfitter because having to pull in consumers for, to keep the doors open is pretty high. You have to sell a lot of product and they have some pretty good vendors and to be able to display the vendors and sales that go on during this time, like or at any time, would help bring in the foot traffic through the doors. These type of electronic message centers are more common throughout South Dakota. I know not in Rapid City, but Rapid City is growing, things are changing. I have a lot of people coming in for electronic message centers and always being shut down for them because they are big and they want to go bigger. I am, I understand that this one, the one of this size would be denied, but I am, talked with the customer and they are willing to like see if we can get something like, hey, let's meet in the middle. I understand that this one, this one here is 281.25 square foot and then I will give this to you as well. And then there's this one that is 150 square foot. So once again, like if we can work with each other on just not saying no, but hey, let's go a little smaller, but also it has to be, it has to be worth it for the customer to install such a costly sign. So a square, 60 square foot is not big enough for that area because of there is a lot of signage in, so, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
We have a few lights up from the commissioners. If you, if you would, just stay close and if any of the commissioners ask, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Mike Kozni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I understand the importance of advertising and drawing people in, I can't remember exactly the size of the sign that the fairgrounds wanted to put in, but I believe it was close to the second one that they proposed here and we denied that. And one of the things that happens when we start putting signage up that's flashing, blinking, whatever, we create competition. I have to compete against you and we're just going to create an avenue. We go down a road where everybody has to have that next bigger sign. And I, for one, would propose to deny this. I'll wait for the other comments, but I see no reason to put this big a sign and then start the competition. So, thank you.
Eric Hykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. Can we see the site plan where the, while we're doing that? What kind of, just out of curiosity, Trav's Outfitter, what kind of shop is that? It doesn't, you don't, it's not relevant to the subject matter, but I'm just curious. What kind of, what kind of shop is this?
It, it sells like boots and--
Okay.
So like runnings and stuff.
Makes sense as outfitter, okay. Site triangle issues there. It looks like we're above that height at the approach. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair.
Vicky.
Yeah, it will not create any site triangle issues. And again, it has to be at least 10 foot above ground and it has a maximum height, whether it's 60 square feet or whatever size.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Vicky. Kind of sharing the same opinion of Mike on, so I'm, my answers, my questions have been answered. Thank you. I'm gonna wait till I hear the rest of the planning commission, so.
Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, the massive percentage increase, I don't support it. Question for staff, if in lieu of a pedestal mount sign, if this were to be mounted on the sidewall of the business, does the same maximum square footage apply? Same illumination, same rigs and rules apply if it were mounted to the building versus pull them out?
Mr. Chair, there was a committee put together. It's been several years now, it seems like yesterday, that worked on the sign code and they labored over it for about three years and they landed on 60 square feet of LED signage. That was a really hot topic for that committee. Obviously, there are those in our committee that think that we have sign clutter and those that think that signage is, is, is necessary, which certainly from a land use perspective, we see the need for signage and there's a very generous square footage allotment of pole signs, ground signs and wall signs. The biggest restriction though is on the LED signage.
So graphics and moving images, that's the, pretty much the vibe?
Right, right.
Okay, thanks.
And just the, the comment was made that they could dim the sign. It's required. There has to be an auto dimmer on it that as the sky gets darker, the sign gets dimmer so that we don't have a blaring light in the night sky.
Thank you. Eric Hykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies. I remembered my question now. Are there, is the, is the signage shielded so that there's no light trespass above, shining up into the sky? Meaning, you know, from 90 degrees and up, is there, does that light move up or does it move down? I guess--
Just it moves out.
Out, okay.
So when the sign is manufactured, they have their, what are called louvers put on them and they're like little tiny shields and they kind of like shield the LEDs that are in, that are in.
Okay.
So they, each, each line has its own little--
So it is moving light up into the sky as well as out?
More out.
More out, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Vicky.
We would concur with that on all the LED signage that we have in the city and we do have quite a bit of it. They do project outwards. We're not seeing that they're projecting up and we do go out from time to time and check the lighting on those signs.
Mike Kozni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with all that said, I would ask for denial on the sign, stating the four findings that the staff has listed. I thought they did a good job of pointing these out and so I would ask for denial.
Okay, Mike Kozni made the motion to deny item three. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Chair.
Vicky.
If you could just reiterate that he recommended to deny based on the four findings?
Yep, that, Mike said that. I just didn't repeat it.
No, that's why.
Is there a second to that?
One second.
Vince seconded that motion? I'm just, I tried to wait to the end for any comments. I have the, my comments on this is, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to negotiate this. These are tough to negotiate in a meeting. It's harder to try to figure out something on the fly. And then the other part of this zoning board of adjustment is just a higher standard of, based on our city codes. If there's interest in the sign community and changing that 60 square feet, I think that needs to be looked at on a community-wide basis instead of starting it on a one-off, this sign, that sign. Because once we set a precedent in zoning board of adjustment, we're going to have a lot of people looking for that same treatment in other locations, whether or not those locations are similar. But that's my two cents. Any other comments on the motion to deny? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item number four before you is 25 VA 16. This is a variance to allow gravel and asphalt millings in lieu of hard surfacing, increase the maximum fence height allowed in the front yard from four feet to six feet and reduce the minimum required landscaping from 246,900 points to 204,610 points. This is property located on East St. Charles Street, just east of the intersection of Campbell Street and East St. Charles. This property is currently zoned public district with a future land use of public as well and access is off of East St. Charles Street. So this property is currently utilized by the Rapid City Streets Department to store materials, equipment and snow during the winter months. There is no structural development on this property right now and that use of, by the streets department is not going to change with this request. What they are proposing to do here is they are proposing to do improvements to this property as part of a project that will extend city storm sewer from Campbell Street east along, East St. Charles Street and then north across the subject property to a drainage channel that will ultimately discharge into Rapid Creek, which is up over here. So as part of these improvements, they're going to be raising the grade of the site, installing perimeter fencing, improving the driveway approach and then constructing water and sewer in preparation for future building on this property. So with those improvements that are being made, that's where these variances come into play. So this property is almost nearly completely encumbered by floodplain, 100-year floodplain and there is a portion of floodway in that northeast corner as you get closer to the creek. So this significant flood hazard area in this case does create a special circumstance that would warrant approval of a variance request because of the fact that any development on this property would require a floodplain development permit, which looks at that work with regard to water flows, elevations and obstructions. So that is something that remains on the radar. With this property being zoned public district, that does allow for uses that serve the needs of the general public and that includes municipal facilities and storage. So this does not grant a land use that is otherwise excluded in that district. So the reason that they are proposing to do the gravel and/or asphalt milling surfacing is once the site grading is done, they will put gravel over this red portion here. This area will be the storage area. And when the site grading's done, they'll put gravel over it and the asphalt millings could potentially come later. They are going to lay asphalt millings as they become available from other city projects. So neither gravel or asphalt millings are permitted as hard surfacing without a variance, so they're just covering their bases and asking for both at this point in time. And then when it comes to the fence height, per code, a fence in the front yard can't be more than four feet in height. They are proposing to increase that to six feet because this property to the east has an existing six-foot-tall chain-link fence that's installed eight feet from the property line that abuts East St. Charles Street. So what they're wanting to do is just extend that fence line with the same material, the same height and the same setback so that they can provide perimeter fencing around the entire site and increase the site security. And then when it comes to landscaping, all the areas outside of the storage area, as you can see depicted here, will be grassed. So they will remain as grass area. With this project, the area of the storage is actually decreasing from what it is right now. They're actually reducing the gravelled area. So there will be more grass area on this property. But with the drainage improvements that are required, they are going to have to remove 53 trees that are currently impeding the drainage. And at this point in time, they're, we're not proposing to replace any of those trees due to the fact that future development on this property may change where that landscaping should be. So ultimately, staff is recommending that the variance to reduce the landscaping points applies only for the current uses and that any future development on the property has that landscaping reassessed and the landscaping be brought up to compliance with the code or a separate variance be obtained. So when staff looked at this, we did not feel that this was interest to the neighborhood or changed significantly the use of this property. So staff is recommending approval. This gives you an idea of the floodplain that's on the property. The blue is the floodplain, so you can see it's almost entirely in the floodplain. This is a picture of the property as it exists today. As you can see, there's no fencing on this property right now, no site security. This is the other side of the lot. This is the fencing that already exists to the property to the east and that's what they'll just be extending, so it will provide a cohesive aesthetic. This is East St. Charles Street looking east and this is East St. Charles Street looking west. So the variances that are requested appear to be appropriate for the use of the property and the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval based on there being special circumstances. This is the minimum adjustment necessary and it is appropriate for the surrounding neighborhood. I'll stand for any questions and the street supervisor is in the audience as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Vicky.
Cassie, could I have you go to the zoning map, please? So this property is currently zoned public, which we do that often when it's city-owned property. But you'll see that the property to the east is light industrial and this is truly a light industrial use. If we had zoned this light industrial, then the six-foot fence would be allowed, the perimeter landscaping would be allowed. And as you know, in many of our light industrial uses, we have similar variance requests where they want to do gravel in those storage areas for multiple reasons. We want to preserve it as public because as Cassie shared, future use of this property might be a more upscale city use. So we didn't want to give up that zoning designation. But because of that, it did require the three variances to make these improvements.
Haven.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The, I, on the west side of this, along Campbell, it looks like those are retail places. If we approve this request, that would apply to the current plan for the city to use the property, I assume. And what would, what would trigger a, us looking at that again if there was some change in the use?
Mr. Chair.
Vicky.
You said it, Haven, when they change the use. When they do that, then we would look at the landscaping again and whether or not pavement would be needed at that time.
And I know the city-- And I know the city, you know, when we approve this, or in any case, you know, does monitor the dust levels of other properties? My question is, this being a city-owned property, will, can we be assured that the city will, will monitor this property the same as other properties?
And we do. I believe we have Morgan Twombly in the office, on the audience today. She is our environmental planner and does our air quality permits. And regardless if it's city or private-owned, the dust palliative must be on all properties that don't have that hard surfacing in these larger areas. And if we were to notice an issue with air quality, we certainly would pursue the city similar to anybody else.
That dust palliative is also a stipulation of the variance.
All right, Eric Hykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good summary, Cassie, and very helpful visuals. As I see it, this is the terminus of the green belt, the end of the bike path. Is that correct? Is there any kind of buffer that's required along the edge of that bike path visually between this land use and the adjacent commercial? Is it, can that be addressed, discussed?
I defer to Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was looking at the Google Map, street view on this, and it does show that there is somewhat of a buffer in that area. There's a drainage ditch located along the bike path. There's a little bit of landscaping and grass area between the property line and the bike path itself. So it won't be the most attractive view from the bike path, but still, it's common in this area to be about like that.
Thank you, Kip. Thank you, Cassie.
Vince?
Thank you, Chair. So you're going to take down some of these trees. There, there's some on the, obviously on the south west side of it, and then there was those on the northeast side of it. How many are you talking about taking down?
They're proposing to take down fifty-three right now.
And what type of trees are these that were?
Cottonwood. Jesse says they're cottonwood.
Okay, and, and when we talk about the dust palliative, and, I mean, what kind of an impact does that create for the neighbors that now that those trees won't be there?
Good morning, Morgan Twombly, environmental planner. So two things. The Streets Department is within a compliance plan with the Air Quality Department, so they get regularly inspected. I work with Jesse. I was actually just out there last week. So this site, because they're using fill a lot, they actually just have a water truck there, so they're really good with the water. They have contractors out there. Everybody's using water. So in terms of that, they have the dust palliative, but they also are using water, which is really good for the neighborhood, because they're consistently out there using that. In terms of the trees, I have been out there as well to look at some of the tree removal, because I heard fifty-three. I also was a little concerned. I will say, again, they are mostly cottonwoods, and they're larger cottonwoods. But any trees that are in there that are maybe a little bit smaller, that are desirable trees, like some ashes out there, we are looking at potentially maybe removing some of those, so we can replant them elsewhere, so that we're not just getting rid of a bunch of trees. But again, they're within the compliance plan, so in terms of air quality concerns, I wouldn't be concerned with it, with the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Kozny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those trees that are along, they look like they're along the creek there. Is that where, it looked like that's where they were? That said, you take out a bunch of trees, are we gonna have a problem with the land going into the creek? Basically runoff problems and that kind of thing. So that, that's one of the questions that I have. There is not a sightline problem with any of the fencing either, okay? And then the dust palliative, I understand that, but with us being so close in town, we usually did the asphalt millings more so. I guess I have concerns that even though we will be concerned with the dust, and we will be aware of it, I, I think that there's chance for it still when the wind kicks up or whatever. It would be great if we could do the asphalt millings sooner than later. And, and those are my concerns that I have with this.
I'm gonna chime in too, along those lines. Going to, the snow removal dump site part of this sort of makes it a seasonal haul area. And, you know, if this were a construction site, we'd have a spot at the entrance to, with big rocks to get rid of mud from the tires of the trucks. Is there anything like that, or is this just hard surfacing in a certain distance?
If we can refer to Jesse or Nicole on that one.
Good morning. I'm Nicole Leacy. I'm a project engineer here for the city, and I'm the project manager on this project. Jesse Reebe is the streets superintendent. He's in the audience too. But as far as trackout pad, you can kind of see on the screen, we are proposing concrete approach. I think that's approximately seventy-five feet into the property. Beyond that, the current plan was to have either gravel or millings.
Okay. And then the same deal with the drainage, the drainage of this site, I assume now generally heads towards the creek, and that won't change. Is there, but the building at the backside, does that create kind of a detention area and a metering part, or is it just sort of landing some additional stormwater from that pipe that runs along the west?
Sure. Could you go to the other site plan, please?
So the site plan here, all of the, of the property will drain to the east to a swale that will then drain to the north into a stormwater quality treatment pond. That pond will provide stormwater quality treatment for this site only. The regional drainage that Cassie mentioned at the beginning is provided through the red pipe, which runs along the west side of the property. That's a sixty-inch pipe, so it will take quite a bit of drainage off of Campbell Street for us and convey it in, through the sixty-inch pipe, the drainage channel on the far north end of the property, and ultimately to Rapid Creek. Does that answer your question?
Yep, yep. Just wanted to make sure we weren't putting stuff back on East St. Charles from the site.
Nope, it will all drain to the north and then east to the creek.
Thank you, Nicole. Kelly?
Thank you. Not to drag this out, I know we're voting on fence and all that. That, that large catch basin, this might be a Morgan question. That water quality structure, is that a monitoring device for that, you know, collected storm runoff? I just saw that detail, and I was just curious. Is that a monitoring structure, or what's the function of that? Before that, I always worry about runoff into Rapid Creek, you know? So I just, I was curious about that monitoring structure and what its purpose is.
Nicole, could you take a shot at that?
Sure, yeah. The water quality structure in the northeast corner. It's a concrete structure with smaller diameter holes in it, so it kind of meters water out at a slower rate, and that allows sediment to settle out into the basin before it leaves the site.
Gotcha.
That's probably the simplest explanation I can provide to you.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, Eric Hykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A comment and a question. I'll start with the question. So the basin that the sixty-inch stormwater gets funneled into, is that gonna be allowed to revegetate and trees grow in there in the long term, or is that gonna have to be kept open for maintenance? My comment is, it's gonna want, nature is gonna want trees to go back in there and grow back, so is that gonna be allowed to happen, or is it gonna be kept open? So.
Nicole?
That's an interesting question. So ultimately, the city stormwater crew would maintain this as a regional drainage element. I can't answer if they would remove naturally grown trees in, within the drainage channel. I, I believe you wouldn't want them there to potentially impact the drainage. I don't probably think it's a good idea for them to be in the bottom of a drainage channel. Could they grow into the, into the side slopes and maybe not impact the drainage? Sure, but probably not in the bottom of the drainage channel.
Okay, you ready for a comment?
Sure.
So just be warned, this is just my opinion. I think there should be more buffering between the bike path and this facility visually. I also think some buffering along St. Charles would be pleasant because of the negative visual impact of the storage area. Those are my two preferential comments as a landscape architect. Thanks.
All right, Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna, you know, mention, we work with the police department, mobile medics, or mobile medics do, and the unhoused use the creek and these areas when they get too heavily vegetated, and nefarious activities can happen in these areas that the, that they can't have, law enforcement have trouble seeing and having access to. So we work with them trying to keep that area clean through with our WOWEY Wildland Interface crews and the Parks and Rec. We try to go in there and make it look nice, but also help the community stay safe, so.
Good comment. Thank you. Anything else from the commission on the variance to allow gravel or asphalt millings and increase the fence height? Including myself, got a little off-topic, but that happens. Possibly a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Vince is making the motion to approve that, those variances with the three, or four stipulations citing the criteria that...
May I suggest the minimum adjustment necessary, and that it's the use that's otherwise allowed on the property?
Can I ask Erica a quick question? Did you want to keep some of those trees near that bike path? Is that what you're asking for?
You can require a stipulation specific to the variances being requested, but we can't design the site for them.
I gotta get, you have to request it. Eric?
So my comment really isn't relevant to the variances. It's in the long term of this land use. Once the fences are built and the, and the surfacing is put in place, could we consider adding trees as a buffer between the bike path and this facility? It's not, it's not relevant to what we are talking about today, but just in the long term of this area. Thanks.
Just asking for some clarification. And yes, according to the stipulations set out by the staff.
All right, is there a second to Vince's motion? I heard when Mike Goller here seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion to approve these variances? Mike Kozny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I hope the asphalt millings are really considered sooner than later. I just really think that it will make a difference, especially in this area being so close to the bike path, to the other areas that are close by here.
All right, anything else on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. That's our final item on the zoning board of adjustment agenda today. I'd look for a motion to adjourn that meeting, so we can start planning. Okay, Vince made the motion to adjourn. Mike Goller here seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That takes us to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Again, if any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda, please grab a speaker request form along the left wall from the table and hand it to the staff seated over there, and we'll make sure you can speak on the item that you wish to. And if you still have a cell phone that's not silenced, please do so now. Items one through ten have been placed on the consent calendar today and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following item. Item ten, two-five PD zero-two-six. The Rapid City Planning Commission, action on this item is final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Department of Community Development by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through ten that staff would like removed from the consent calendar?
No, thank you.
Are there any items one through ten that any planning commissioner would like removed from the consent calendar? And are there any items one through ten that any audience member would like removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, the chair would then entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through ten in accordance with staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
All right, Eric Hykes made that motion. Vince seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven.
Mr. Chair, before we start, item number eleven, we need to do a little housekeeping. It's come to our attention that at least one of you received an email from the petitioner for this application, and that is a breach of ex parte communication regulations. So if any of the rest of you did, you need to disclose that in the meeting. We did visit with the consultant and inform them that that is not allowed, and that they are welcome to submit their comments to our department. We will attach it to the item for consideration by the planning commission and by any of the neighbors or anyone else checking the agenda. Then everyone hears the same thing at the same time. Not even staff can contact you before a meeting and have a discussion about an item. So if anyone else received an email, you'll need to disclose it. Thank you.
I'll start. I received the email. I deleted it because it's not something that we can consider other than the agenda items. Mike Kozny? Sorry.
I also received the email.
I also received the email.
Was it from Renee Katrin? Okay, I received it, but I didn't open it like you, so.
Got it, got it back. All right. I kept hitting the button too many times in a row. Anybody else? Kelly noted that he received it. I think we've recognized everybody. All right, item number eleven.
Item number eleven before you is rezone twenty-five RZ oh-two-five. This is a rezoning request from medium-density residential district to office commercial district. We're at the property located at thirty-nine fifty Fairway Hills Drive. This property is currently zoned medium-density residential. Future land use of this area is low-density neighborhood. Access to this property is off of technically Burnwood Drive. It's addressed off of Fairway Hills. Both of those are classified as local streets. Currently, this property consists of one-point-three-five acres and contains a twenty-four-unit multifamily dwelling, which you can see here, and then also a small office building, which is used as an onsite management office. What they're proposing to do, this property recently sold, the new owners would like to convert the use of that office, discontinue the use of an onsite management office, and allow this as an office space for lease. So when we're looking at rezone requests, we're looking at some criteria. One of them with regard to this amendment being necessary because of changing conditions in the area. When staff looks through this request, we do not feel that the proposed amendment is necessary. This is a well-established and predominantly residential area, predominantly developed with single-family dwellings and multifamily dwellings. There are two, if I go back to the aerial picture, there are two properties located here to the north that are currently undeveloped. Everything else around it is developed out and established. A standalone office that is leased out is not a permitted use in the medium- A standalone office that is leased out is not a permitted use in the medium-density residential district. In the office commercial district, both the offices for lease and the multifamily dwelling would be permitted uses. So, that's the reason for requesting it to be office commercial. Currently, the city is experiencing some safety, security, and enforcement issues with multifamily dwellings that do not maintain an onsite management office. It is a pretty important method for internally managing the safety of multifamily units and then also providing that connection between first responders and what is happening on the property in the event that law enforcement or some other form of security or medical response is needed. So, changing the use of that office building and removing the onsite management eliminates a pretty beneficial tool for emergency services, for the residents, and for the surrounding neighborhood. The other thing that we're looking at with rezones is whether or not it's consistent with the intent and the purpose. Those onsite management offices are a vital piece of protecting the quality of life for not only the tenants of the multifamily dwellings, but also the surrounding neighborhood. So, removing it and having office space for lease does contradict the intent of a multifamily development and is really not in harmony with the residential character and residential development patterns of this area. Another key thing that staff considered when we were looking at this is that mobile home parks currently by regulation are required to provide an onsite management office. Multifamily dwellings, in many cases, are of a similar intensity of residence as mobile home parks. So, staff is looking at doing an ordinance amendment to potentially require onsite management offices for multifamily dwellings as well, given that there is that similar intensity of residence. The change of this office building and the change of the zoning of the property to office commercial will have an impact on the character of this property and may increase the traffic on both Fairway Hills Drive and Burnwood Drive, depending on what kind of tenant goes into that office. Fairway Hills and Burnwood are both local streets that are not designed for commercial traffic, and this could also create somewhat of a parking conflict with the tenants of that multifamily dwelling right now. Currently, this property as it sits is underparked slightly for the uses as they exist today, being an onsite management office and a multifamily. That is fairly easily rectified. The property owner does own the property to the north as well, tract H, as you see it on this site plan. So, there is potential to do a developmental lot agreement. There is about five or seven parking spaces in this little area right here. So, the parking situation is fairly easily rectified. However, it could still create some parking conflicts if the office building were converted to some sort of commercial use. The future land use of this property is urban neighborhood, which does list the office commercial district as a secondary zoning district. However, if I pull the zoning map back up, there is only one property within, near proximity of this property that is zoned office commercial. You can see it right here. This is currently developed with like a multi-tenant commercial entity. And so, rezoning this property would create spot zoning, as that adjacent property is not contiguous to this property. So, it would create an area of spot zoning if it were rezoned to office commercial. So, ultimately, staff is recommending denial of this rezoning request, as it is not in harmony with the existing residential patterns of the property. You can see this is the office as it exists today. This is that multi-tenant apartment complex. This is looking at them both in proximity to how close they are. And this is, they have posted the notification, posted the sign on the property, so they have met the notification requirements. Staff just does not feel that the conditions in this area have changed that would warrant the rezoning of this property. It does create spot zoning. The roads in this area are not designed for commercial traffic, and a review of the criteria of the code have identified that there could be adverse impacts to the neighborhood character as a result of this rezoning. So, staff is ultimately recommending denial. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. We have a few speaker requests on this item. Dr. Gary Harms, if you'd like to address the commission?
Either one of them. Both of them are live.
I'm Gary Harms. I moved here five years ago from Aberdeen, South Dakota. I was superintendent of schools there for 11 years and used to run a lot of board meetings, but I've never been on this side, and so I'm kind of nervous about presenting to all of you. Do you have, I'd like to use one of your slides if I could.
Yeah, which one? You tell me when to stop.
Keep going. Right there. You see the yellow triangle there? And right below the B of that yellow triangle is our house, right there. And we moved to Rapid City five years ago because our youngest son and his wife live out here. They own Once Upon a Child, and my son also works as a systems analyst for M-Cents. At the time we moved out here, we had a two-year-old granddaughter. Now, we have a seven-year-old granddaughter, a four-year-old grandson, a two-year-old grandson, and a new baby on the way in December or January, one of the two, because it's very close. So, we have a real concern about this being rezoned into semi-commercial, or whatever you call it. We watch our children every day, our grandchildren. We pick up our granddaughter from Canyon Lake Elementary School. Then we go over to the daycare and we pick up our two grandsons, and they spend the afternoon then at our house, which you can see very close to where this property is, until about 5:20, when they're picked up. So, things have been working really well, as far as traffic and so forth in, in the area. Are you able to show this to them?
Stand by.
Daryl, switch it to, so you can just put it on the screen.
Right here, like this?
Here we go.
Oh, boy, that didn't look very good. Well, that's the view from our front porch, and that is the very building that is looking to be semi-commercial. And if that's the case, there's going to be increased traffic at 8 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, and 5 o'clock, and that is of concern to me. When I was, when I was growing up, my two favorite books were Mike Mulligan and The Steam Shovel and The Little House. And both of these speak to progress and unintended consequences. My fear is that if this is rezoned, that it opens the door to something else. Oh gee, this was so successful in renting out to office people. Why don't we build a bigger building, which would block the view of most of the people that live on Mountain Shadow Place? With the exception of one family, I believe that all of the people that go up Mountain Shadow Place are retirees. It is essentially an upscale housing development, and really, I see no need for this board to agree to change the status quo. I am not against progress. I have come to love Rapid City, but this is my home. It's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Eldon Bell?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Eldon Earl Bell. I live at 3806 Ridgemore Drive, which is very close to that triangle. And I moved here, I bought the property in 1997. I'm now almost 91 years old. I've watched the families in this district grow. I saw one of the little babies I first met when I moved here get married last week. We have little children, as previously mentioned, all over the place, around this yellow triangle and throughout the neighborhood. This is not a new issue that you're facing. We went through this before. Many of you are young enough to remember Sam Koiker, who was our mayor. Well, I knew Sam when he was a councilman. And we had the largest gathering in this room that's ever come here, when the neighborhood was proposed to have commercial introduced in the same property by the previous owner. I believe the mayor at that time, Sam was a councilman, said they had over 3,000 people, couldn't get them all in here, who did not want this property changed. Later on, after the city council denied it, and there was only one vote on the entire council that was for it, and she was pretty embarrassed to vote for it, but I think she had pressure, or she wouldn't have. All the other council turned it down. Of course, the mayor had no comment, because unless it was a tie, he didn't vote. But Mayor Koiker told me later on that entering a commercial rezoning into this area was like sticking the camel's nose in the tent. It was just a pretext to begin commercializing the entire area. There are reasons why some people want to change things, and we understand that. However, in my time here since 1997, I find this to be one of the finest neighborhoods still in Rapid City. And I now have a grandson here who's a businessman. I won't go into his details, but his name is Ian Bell, and he's worked, and definitely a Rapid City man. And he's, he's quite a good man, and he's developing things, but he wouldn't even consider anything like this. And I pray that the council will follow your recommendation and make a very firm denial. And if they have any questions, they should look back on the council minutes, because there were many speakers, many more than are here today, that spoke against commercializing this. We don't want the camel's nose in the tent. We want to preserve the great Rapid City that the prior speaker mentioned that brought him here. It's the same thing that brought me and my family here, and I hope my grandson will enjoy. And I don't know how many more years I have at age 91, but I'd like to enjoy them also. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. All right. Mike Quasny? Oh, sorry, I got one more. Renee Katrin?
And then, can you bring up the zoning? I want your zoning map first. Renee Katrin with Advanced Design. Can I have the zoning map first? I'd like to tell you about the current owner that purchased these apartments June 1st of 25. He currently has a one-year lease on this office building. He came to me to call the city to see if it was legal to lease out this office with the current zoning. I did find out it was not legal in MDR. So, meeting with staff, we decided what would be a legal use, because currently on Minnesota Street Apartments, they are zoned office commercial. Well, you can have a office and apartments in office commercial. So, we decided to rezone this piece, even though the gentleman owns both pieces all the way to Sheridan Lake Road, and we could zone the entire three sets of lots if spot zoning was an issue. But all he'd like to do is make his current office building compliant, because he is currently leasing it to a third party since June. And no one in the neighborhood has noticed it, because nothing has changed. It's a tiny little office. And even when this person that's existing now leasing it, may not want to lease it after a year, he just plans on leasing it to possibly a single person, because it is so small, that is a CPA. But he'd like to be able to do something with it, since he had to purchase it as part of the apartments. Okay, now, can you go to the other? Thank you. So, this is his plan for the whole entire property in phases. And his plan also is quite smart, because he plans on just, as he makes the money off apartments, he will go phase by phase. And instead of being a super greedy apartment person, like a whole bunch of them are, he's gonna go with smaller buildings and go with as much parking as he possibly can, so there's not a lack of parking. He even, he mandates that he wants two spaces per unit, which is not even in the code, because he wants to make sure there's plenty. And in this case also, he added a whole extra parking lot to help subsidize the parking for the existing lot that's currently there and existing. And that's his next phase, is to help alleviate parking. But this is how this came about, is this man just came to me and wanted to do the right thing and make his current office legal, because he currently is leasing it. And he just wanted to do the right thing. That's how this came about. And it's not like someone's trying to do something wrong and illegal. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't think so at the moment, but if you stay close, we'll call you up if there is. Mike Quasny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd like to thank you for trying to make something that is not legally being done, make it legal. I can understand what you're after. I'd also like to thank the concerned citizens, because that's what makes our community great, is citizens coming forward and voicing, as you did. And thank you for coming forward and addressing those. They can make this residential, this office building, right? There's nothing that says they have to have that office for the apartments.
Vicki, maybe you'd?
Currently, a manager's office is not required for an apartment project.
Okay, so they can convert this to a house and, and make it into something that somebody could rent as a house instead of a commercial?
No.
No?
An office is only allowed in a residential area when it's accessory to a permitted use. So, apartments are allowed. For them to have this office, it can, that building can only be used as an office, a manager's office, for the apartments. Now, let's say they came in and wanted to expand and put additional apartments in this area. They could do that. They could not make a standalone, single-family residence, but if they wanted to do additional apartments, you could have more than one apartment building on a residential lot.
The back?
Kind of.
May I explain to?
Renee?
This gentleman has a property manager company?
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll come back to you. I'm just not sure I understood that. So, if this, if this office, if they decided to put a kitchen and a bathroom into it, they couldn't lease it as a one-bedroom apartment?
Right. You can have one use per parcel of land. So, you can have an office, or, excuse me, you can have an apartment project, or you can- can have a single-family home or a duplex. But within the apartments, if you recall, we brought an ordinance amendment forward that said you could have more than one apartment structure on a residential lot without requiring a plan development, but you can't mix the uses together. Now, an argument could be made that maybe it's a one-unit apartment. We would work with them. It's reasonable, it's residential.
That's kind of the...
Okay, that's...
Thought I was going down.
Yes. That's the thought I had, okay.
Sorry, I interrupted you, Mike. Anything else?
Okay, now, being since they've leased this out, is there anything that, do they have to break this lease because it's being used inappropriately?
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
If we receive a complaint that there is a commercial use on this property, and it's not being used as a manager's office, we will send them a letter requesting compliance, and the attorneys will get involved at that point.
Okay, well, hopefully, we don't have to get attorneys involved, and we can do things on the up and up. But we have no control on what goes in there next, and that's the problem when you start doing this, where you have somebody that's commercial in there, and maybe they aren't a problem right now. But then the next one, you don't know, and we have no control on that. So that's why we have to kind of stick with this. I actually would make a motion to deny, based on the criterias here. The conditions are not, have not changed, the rezoning request, the spot zoning, and existing zoning is, and the surrounding areas primarily residential, and it goes on to state other things there. The property is assessed from Fairway Drive and Bryron Drive, neither of which were built for commercial design, and a review of the criteria listed has identified adverse impacts. Those are the four criterias that were for denial that the city had placed. So using those four, that's why I would make a motion for denial.
All right, is there a second to Mike's motion? Alicia seconded that motion.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
Before you take action on the motion, I did want to explain something, because Renee made a good comment about, while we have other apartments that are zoned office commercial, and she's right, we do. And she mentioned one being on Minnesota Street. That is adjacent to an arterial street. Even in the zoning document that Cassie just had up on the screen, there used to be a funeral home, that's, if many of you will recall, at that location, and we worked with them to zone that as such. But again, it's adjacent to an arterial street, which can accommodate commercial traffic. This is unique in that it is in a residential area, served by residential streets, and surrounded by other residential uses.
All right. Eric Kike's comments on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, does the receipt of that email preclude my ability to vote on this item?
Not as long as you disclose that you received it.
Okay, thank you. So compliments to staff, I think it's a very comprehensive report. Special thanks to the speakers here that came and voiced their concerns. Particularly good site planning by the company that Ms. Katron is representing, I think it's cohesive. The only comment I have is, wouldn't a plan development be the better tool to overlay in this, with these three lots in the future, or is the rezone the one we need here?
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
They will not need to do a plan development to bring in additional apartment projects.
Okay.
It would probably require a development, a lot agreement, so they can have shared parking. And we would look at it in relationship to how that phasing is. At some point, it might trigger a traffic impact study, depending upon the number of units that they propose.
I'm going to support the denial as well, just for the record.
Vince?
Thank you, Chair. And Vicki, thanks for the clarification, you know, referring to the apartment complex on Minnesota. So, but this is just for this one lot. It has nothing to do with the lot that is at Fairway and Sheridan Lake Road. That is not even in consideration at this point. All right. That's all I wanted to do, is clarify that. Thank you.
Haven?
Just a comment, you know, the applicant Terry Kraft, I think, has done some good things in Sioux Falls, and that I'm somewhat familiar with. However, and I do like his long-range plan here to develop those two lots over towards Sheridan Lake Road, and it would seem to me that this office, apartment office that exists today would be a great asset when the whole property is developed and for an onsite manager.
Yeah, I'm gonna just kind of chime in the same with Haven. When I looked at this, I believe the current apartment building's twenty-four units, and I don't think that that is of a size that you can have an onsite manager. The economics just aren't there, the effect on rent would be too great to compete. But two more buildings, you know, that's the struggle on this. And yeah, we're only able to talk about this lot with this request, but for me, it's too high of a hurdle to jump with the expectation that there's more units coming. So the motion on the floor is for denial of item eleven. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve.
Item twenty-five CA zero-zero-two is in consideration of the twenty-twenty-five Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. Staff have been working closely with our consultant, Logan Simpson, who is in town. We've got Megan Moore with Logan Simpson here to present the plan. And, yep, will be available for questions if anything comes up.
Mr. Chair, before Megan gets started, I just wanted to take a time, the opportunity to thank all of you. I have been emailing Planning Commission, City Council, other directors. The plan, as it's been put together and then warped into this final draft, so many of you have provided excellent comments, and I think you'll be happy to see that, as you're reading through the document, many of your comments have been incorporated into the plan. It's just been a very interactive process, and thanks to all of you for taking the time to do that.
Thanks, Vicki, and good morning, Planning Commissioners. Again, as Marlo mentioned, I'm Megan Moore with Logan Simpson. And first, to start off, just celebrate this. Celebrate some of these numbers that you've seen throughout the process. As Vicki mentioned, it's been a broad-based outreach. We've reached a lot of folks through the process. We had great attendance at some of the events at the DALL. One of our first trips was to get out in the community and go to some of the festivals and events, which was really fun. So just kind of get word out and get folks' comments and thoughts throughout the process has been really great and helpful, and has directly informed the plan itself. Just a reminder of those public engagement events and kind of what we asked, just in general, throughout the process. We started the process by asking kind of high-level issues and opportunities. What folks would like to see from this plan, what folks would like to see in the future. Then we kind of dove down into that. Well, what does that look like? Where does that go? What are those locational suggestions for improvements on the ground? And then at the last event earlier in September, we asked folks, well, help us, you know, we've proposed these goals and actions and policies. Help us identify what's most important to you, what's your priority to see happen sooner rather than later. We threw in some, just some eye candy on some of the events themselves. We had a great venue for a lot of the more formal events and workshops in the DALL, and great place to take photos as well. And then some of the events back last year and into last fall, through Pumpkin Festival, some of the food truck events, the Music in the Park events, et cetera. So just kind of this broad array and types of different venues to get folks involved. And through all those events and outreach, the community input came back and highlighted key things underneath each of these themes. So you'll see all of these, all of the things with the little checkmarks there throughout the plan and your goals and policies and actions, and the overall themes of land use, housing, arts and culture, transportation, set the stage for the chapters in your document. The plan structure itself, like I said, all those themes that you just saw in the last slide really helped inform the structure of this, and those are those kind of eight middle chapters there, from chapters three to ten. Those really include your goal, policy structure for the plan. Chapters one and two really set up the idea of the plan. So first chapter really kind of sets the stage, identifies who's responsible for the plan, gives a little bit of background. Two goes into vision and values, kind of sets the stage for the goals and policies underneath. And then at the end, maybe the shortest chapter, but maybe the most important, is your implementation chapter, which really talks about those action items that staff, community, different departments can actually move forward. And a little bit more detail on chapter one. So like I said, it really kind of gets into the authority of the plan, the background, the overview, kind of what's happened since the last plan, what things needed to be focused on. Maybe more importantly, as we go through the slides here, is that setting that framework for the plan itself, identifying those key trends and opportunities which directly roll into the goals, and just highlighting that geographic scope of the plan, what area are we dealing with, and the relationship to other plans. So what we wanted to do is make sure this was coordinated with other plans, such as your infrastructure master plans, et cetera. And the framework for the plan itself, along with future land use planning. So I'll talk to the graphic on the right first. At the beginning of the process, we really worked with the community to understand the values that needed to be set forward in the plan. Underneath those values are your goals, action, or your policies and actions that are then set in place to actually meet your goals and your vision of the plan. That's kind of the graphic on the right. The graphic on the left talks about how all of the different elements in your chapters, from economy to education, public services and facilities, how those directly inform future land use planning, and the future land use map and categories, et cetera. So all of these different things work together to really set the stage for the future of the city. The key trends and opportunities, so you'll see some similarities between kind of that earlier slide on community input and what is highlighted here as the goals. So taking that community input, taking a hard look at some of the existing conditions, anticipated trends, helped informed one goal per chapter, and those are outlined here. Within chapter two, this really gets into the overall vision for the community, to help define that with the community, with the study advisory team. The overall vision says that Rapid City is building a strong and healthy community rooted in its people. And that's kind of the overarching sentiment that helps defines the goals, policies and actions further down in the plan. In addition to that are the core values, and I'll get into those in a second. And the last piece of this chapter is really the public engagement, so really diving down by phase, adding a little bit more detail behind what was asked, who we heard from, some of that feedback, what events were held, et cetera. And in regards to community values, so this is interesting and a little bit different from other plans that I've worked on, and I like this format and how it sets up and ties in the values to your goals and policies. But for each chapter, for each of those elements, every chapter starts with relationship back to these community values. So how does housing and its goals and policies help meet the stewardship value, livability value, opportunity value, et cetera? So it's a nice tie back to that, that kind of reminder of what we've heard from the community and what you're seeing in your goals and policies today. Before I get into each of the goals and policies, chapters themselves, I just wanted to talk about the structure of each of these chapters, because they are all the same. So each chapter really starts out with the relationship to the community values, dives into a little bit of existing conditions and community snapshots, just those kind of data points you want to keep in mind that helped set the stage for goals and policies. Talks a little bit about the key opportunities, again, that we heard much from the public through their involvement, and then details out the goals, policy and actions. What you see on these slides, the goal is always at the top. So the goal for balanced growth and land use is balanced growth strategically and collaboratively. The blue text on each of these is the policy statements, and then the action statements are bulleted. We have not included any action statements, because we would take ten minutes to read every chapter, and I don't know that everybody wants to do that this morning. So we've really just highlighted the ones that warranted a good response from all of us as we were reviewing this the other day. Those things that really came to mind as kind of top priority from the public, maybe most important, most actionable, actionable action as we go through. So with that, I won't read every one of these slides, I'll go through them rather quickly, but I know you can read and follow along. So under balanced growth strategically and collaboratively, the big policies here are supportive uses. So looking at the future land use map, providing higher densities, develop complete and accessible neighborhoods, so thinking about walkability, providing services within a neighborhood so you don't have to always get in your car. Focus growth inward, so focusing on infill and redevelopment. You'll see this theme a lot through the different chapters, rather than continuing maybe to build out, and using the tools that you already have in place to prioritize and incentivize that. Buffering incompatible uses, you talked a little bit about that this morning, between different types of use and buffering. Making sure that things are appropriately kind of blended between uses seamlessly, provide a benefit to neighborhoods. Ensure that growth is financially sustainable, so this kind of gets back to also, you know, infrastructure availability, providing roads further out, focusing on infill. And strengthening partnerships, so knowing that the city isn't alone in carrying out a lot of these goals, policies and actions, but you also have county, other agencies, et cetera, involved. In regards to the land use map, so the goals and policies and actions developed as part of this plan really will help inform that next phase, which is identifying and working with different neighborhoods to help make subtle changes to the future land use map. So the plan kind of sets the stage for this, and then that is one of your key projects later on in implementation, to really move this forward through an extensive community engagement process. In regards to housing, so again, the overall goal is just to increase housing affordability, accessibility and availability. So first off, embracing diversity. So not necessarily, all new housing needs to be affordable, but really needs to address that overall diversity of housing within the city. So everything from apartments and condos to, you know, higher-end, higher-income, single-family units, but also that kind of missing middle, so looking at townhomes, duplexes, cottage courts, et cetera. Prioritizing balanced distribution, so looking at high-density housing in terms of where employment centers are, transportation connection, transit connections are, et cetera. Addressing vulnerabilities, so really looking at more of that affordable side of housing and ensuring you've got the programs and incentives to help build that. Under economy, to build economic resilience, so just strengthen existing industry. You've got a strong outdoor amenities base, you've got a strong professional base with the university here, School of Mines. Work with them to enhance that, expand opportunities. So again, working with some of those universities and other schools to build career pathway programs. And then on the flip, not flipside, supporting side of that, help workforce housing needs. So ensuring that your employment base kind of matches what your housing can provide and Providing high-quality public services and facilities, so again, kind of getting back to this infrastructure, idea of infrastructure and using that to your advantage, building and providing services where you already have that infrastructure. Improving operational efficiency, so aligning infrastructure investment with the comprehensive plan and other master plans. Enhancing emergency services and increasing access to supportive services. So developing initiatives and priorities to enhance both of those. Enhancing recreation, open space and natural resources, so continue to protect natural and open spaces. Of course, encouraging low-impact development... Of course, encouraging low impact development. This helps mitigate impacts on water and energy use, protects air quality, water quality, et cetera. Improving park accessibility and functionality. One of the key things that we did look at as part of existing conditions was where parks were located throughout the city and if everybody had access to those within a 20-minute walk. And so being able to look at providing new parks in areas that are currently underserved. Improving existing facilities, so again, kind of that maintenance and updates to facilities that you already have in place, just enhancing them. Developing a safe and connected multimodal transportation network. So a balance here between prioritizing multimodal improvements, so not just transit, but also looking at ped and bike, that was a big conversation that we had with the public throughout the process. But also utilizing state, regional, federal grants to help expand that. Utilizing transportation as an economic development tool, so helping to balance and prioritize transportation improvements where that can also prioritize economic development growth. And then improving roadway safety for all uses, again, or users, again, kind of focusing on safe routes to school, safe streets for all, making sure that your streets are safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, those with disabilities, et cetera. Chapter nine, arts and cultures, so foster a vibrant, inclusive and resilient arts and culture scene. Again, this is one of the big things I think we heard through the process, so not just supporting local artists and creative collaboration, but also strengthening those community and indigenous partnerships, developing public and cultural programming with indigenous communities, and then expanding some of the public art and streetscape improvements that have already been done, especially downtown, but looking at other areas of the city that could benefit from some of those enhancements. Education, promote access to high quality education, so being able to work with the school district, to be able to plan schools in relationship to your neighborhoods, transportation quarters, et cetera. Connecting schools and neighborhoods, again, this kind of crosses into land use and transportation, making sure that schools can also focus as community hubs, they kind of become that center of neighborhoods, you've got a safe route to get there. And then last, foster retention, and this kind of crossed over to the one that I mentioned under economic development. So just being able to provide career pathways and job opportunities, as well as that education to keep folks here in Rapid City versus leaving the community. And then the last chapter, so implementation. So this, as I said, kind of sets the stage for the work plan for the community, for elected officials, boards and committees, city staff to move this forward. So within this chapter, most of these pieces and parts kind of go into the implementation matrix that I'll get to here in a second, but also highlights some very key projects in achieving the vision. And focusing on that list of key projects, one of those is to initiate the future land use plan update, that would be first. Another is to update the municipal codes. There's some subtleties in goals and policies that may need to be updated in the code, and that'll be done after the plan adoption. And then ensuring comprehensive plan, compliance and development reviews. So much like you did today, making sure that the development reviews that come in are in line with the goals and policies within the comp plan itself. Housing was one of the big issues that we talked about throughout the process, creating a housing task force to move some of these implementation action items forward. Aligning capital improvement projects with the comprehensive plan, again, that was something kind of discussed, line infrastructure with land use planning, economic development altogether. And then updating some of the existing plans and studies, so facilities and services plans, updating them to make sure they're in line with the comp plan, implementing some of the transportation plans and studies that are out there, and then aligning the use of vision funds with the comprehensive plan as well. And then the implementation matrix, so this takes every action within the chapters that we've gone through and gives a little bit more detail on how to move them forward. So each is identified by project classification, so this could include additional public engagement, it could include additional plan and studies, it could be a regulatory change, or it could be a capital improvement project. Also identifies where the level of effort's going to be in that, is that a planning action? Is it more of a financial planning aspect? And then what city and state, what city department is responsible for that action item, which department would actually take that on? And then also highlights some of the key partners that should be involved, whether they're truly a key partner and they're co-leading this, whether they're consulted throughout that life of that action item, et cetera. And then last, next step, so we did meet with your MPO last week. They were highly supportive of the plan, we kind of walked through, focused a little bit more on transportation elements and goals and policies with them, but very supportive. They're, we'll be meeting with them again for their final review on October 16th. Of course, we're meeting with all of you this morning. And then next week, we have the two, the Public Works Committee and Legal Finance Committee on Tuesday and Wednesday, and looking towards a city council hearing on October 6th. With that, again, I kind of echo Vicki's sentiment on thank you for everybody that's been involved, that plugged into the online draft plan review, came to the events. Thank you specifically to Commissioners Braun and Hykes as you were part of the study advisory team throughout the process. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Vicki.
If I might, Megan, that was an excellent job. Thank you. So we've had a standing meeting with Logan Simpson throughout this entire time, and we do that via Zoom, and when we sat down and we really looked at, how do we want to get started? The messaging was, we need to identify on all aspects of the city, what's working, what isn't working, and how do we work together as a community to improve? And I said that so many times that I thought that in one of those Zoom meetings that Megan was going to come up, she was going to have a shirt on that said that. She heard it so many times. But I think that at the end of the day, we captured that messaging. We tried to tell a story along the line so that you're seeing where we're at and where we need to go, and then through the implementation, really capturing who are the actors that need to ensure that this just isn't another book that sits on a shelf. And I think that the end result is we've got a document that is so inclusive of so many voices in the community. I believe that it's succinct and well-written, and best of all, action is clear, and we need to take ownership of our part in making sure that we do make these improvements in the community to advance the quality of life in Rapid City.
All right, thanks Vicki. Commissioners, comments? Eric Hykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really proud of this moment. I know that a lot of people worked really hard over the past year, and then specifically over the past couple of months, to get to the point we're at. Megan, thank you, and thank you to your company and your organization for the work you've done. Special thanks to Long Range Planning and Marlo and Melissa and Planning and MPO. I know this was a lot for an already busy organization and team to then have to put this together. So many, many warm and kind thanks for doing this, and I think what's resulting and what we've seen, although it's just an outline today of the overall plan, correct? Just making that clear, that we just saw a paraphrased short version of the overall document. It's some good work, so thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, Haven.
Thank you. Am I correct that the city needs a comprehensive plan in order to have some authority over the three mile area surrounding the municipality?
Vicki.
Yes, that is correct. Our comprehensive plan does give us the authority to have that three mile, that's actually granted by state statute, and then the comprehensive plan reinforces that.
Vince.
Thank you, Chair. Unlike the Eric's, I didn't get to participate in those meetings, but I do know that the staff, I did attend the events that the staff put on, like at the DALL and downtown and so forth, and there was input, there was interest, and so you gathered a lot of great information, and you did take your time, and you encouraged everyone to participate throughout the city, so I thank you for that. Thank you.
Haven.
Just one more comment. I noticed that on the agenda, it's an application for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the comprehensive plan. I assume, well, that was a little confusing to me, I assume this is a new comprehensive plan as opposed to, and obviously it changes the prior comprehensive plan.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Haven. I guess I didn't quite read it that simply, but you're right. We are charged with amending our comprehensive plan at a minimum every 10 years. So we're at our 10-year mark, but we're in essence creating a new plan as a part of it, and so we ended up putting in all that language, hmm, we might want to tweak that a little bit as we advance it to city council. Thank you, Haven.
All right, it certainly was a long process. I always get into the weeds, and then I come out at the end, and I say, okay, well, how do we implement this? And I guess I just had a, the one thing I, we had some discussion in our last comprehensive plan of infill development, and how do we work on that? And I think we've done some good work, but I just, the thing I'd like to pick on is our municipal codes. I think in order to truly push infill development, we have to recognize that parcels within our existing boundaries, within developed areas, are different than when we have something on the edge of the city that's a bare piece of ground that is ready for development. And I guess that's the one thing going forward. I know it's more work for Vicki, you and your staff, so I hesitate in that sense only, but I think that is a, that's a real place to start, that isn't dependent on subsidies, it isn't dependent on finding dollars somewhere. And that, that's the, that's the one thing I'd like to see implemented on the sooner end, is reviewing in that sense.
Mr. Chair, I couldn't agree with you more. Just having this new document before us, and all of us so engrossed in it, and it's fresh in our minds, and we were sitting down at a team, development review team meeting yesterday, and we had an application in, and my staff was challenging me to not think about it as to how we've done this in the past, but how would we do it based on the new comp plan? And we came up with a compromise that will start enacting some of these desires, so that we do have some increased density, that we sustain affordable housing, that we allow mixed-use development in areas where the street networking and other amenities do support it. And so, you know, it was, it was great that they were on it, and they were reminding me, just don't fall back on what the comp plan is today, let's look at what our new comp plan is going to allow and at times require.
Alyssa.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work everyone did. I am excited to absorb it more fully, and I'm curious to see how it's going to affect our, the different, I guess, staff reports and how we'll make decisions, so I think it's going to be really helpful for us. So on your graphics, even just that last one that we looked at, and, you know, thinking about infill or thinking about where it does make sense to have commercial, which maybe it will be in neighborhoods, but not on residential streets, and, you know, these different things that when people do come with variances, we have more clarity in what we're looking at, because I feel like Stahl's a relatively new member, sometimes it's tricky to look through the, yeah, staff report and have a document that we can go back to and kind of draw from when people are requesting variances. So, yeah, thank you for all your work, and looking forward to having it as a resource as we go forward.
All right, anything else from the commission?
Mr. Chair, if I might, Marlo Capsa is our project manager for the comp plan, and she put in such an extreme amount of time working directly with Logan Simpson. There would be times on a weekend, midnight, two in the morning, and I'd be getting emails from Marlo saying, I need your direction on this. I mean, it was amazing, the effort that she put into it. Jessica and Kip sat right there, too, but she definitely, she was hired to take over this project and to take lead, and she has just done a fantastic job.
Wonderful. Thank you, Marlo, and Jessica and Kip. All right, maybe if there's no other comments, a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Vince made the motion, Eric Hykes, right? Seconded the motion, sorry, had to check my hearing. Any discussion on the motion to approve the amendment to the comprehensive plan? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's our last regular agenda item, anything to add for staff items?
Just a little additional housekeeping. So I have spoken with all of you whose terms are expiring to see if you wanted to remain on the planning commission or not. I got one no and three yeses. I will advance that to the mayor. He will then make the decision whether or not to submit those names forward to council for confirmation. You serve until you are either reappointed or replaced, so don't anyone go anywhere. Oh, yes, what date did we land on? October 21? October 21, we're already planning our next Coffee with Planners. Kip's got an item on there. Kip, you want to give a shout out to what that is, real quick?
Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our Coffee with Planners meeting, I will be discussing our ongoing rail yard relocation and railway alignment study, which looks at moving the rail yard away from Campbell Street to another location, preferably outside of town. So we'll have some information on the proposed relocation sites and some more data on that, and also our public survey will be available at that time, so we'll use that to get the word out and get people taking the survey. So that'll be one of the topics that we'll be discussing at Coffee with Planners.
Chips asked for a table to talk about the new fire codes, and then you heard Cassie mention it, we really do want to have a public involved discussion. Some of our larger apartments here in town, we've got a high, high crime rate, and part of the reason is there is no office manager on site that's overseeing the tenants, and so we've got a lot of non-tenants sneaking in and causing some problems within these buildings. And when I say high crime, I'm talking homicides. So secondly, we have a lot of common areas that are not secured, and so people are just walking in off the street and making themselves at home. And then some of the lighting and other outdoor features make for unsafe situations, places where people can hide. The police department has really been struggling with this, and so zoning can serve as a tool to improve security and safety, not only for the neighborhood, but for the tenants of these buildings. So I hope that you do have, if you have an opportunity to join us, we want everyone to weigh in. Eric, you made a good point today, that some of the smaller apartments, it's not cost-efficient to do a manager's office. But on the larger ones, we do believe that it's needed, and we don't require it now, but we're looking at making it a requirement.
All right, sounds like an interesting Coffee with Planners. Everybody put it on your schedule, October 21st. Eric Hykes.
So I need to make a couple corrections. Sorry for my mis, my misidentification of my fellow planning commissioners. Mike, I, I said Gala Han, and your last name's Gala Her, I'm sorry for that. And I actually blew the whole thing because you weren't the one who made the comment, it was actually Quasni, and this was item two, so it was a little early and I hadn't had had coffee yet, so I apologize for that, I wanted to correct that. And then, yeah, well, thank you. And then lastly, I think, Eric, I think you may have incorrectly stated, and just if this helps or doesn't help, you identified you identified item three as item two when you started, when you did the, when you started off. So just throwing that out there. So apologize to the mics for that.
Well, please don't keep a track record on my errors.
All right, Vince.
Thanks, Eric. We're trying to keep everyone, you know?
Quick question, and I'm not trying to revisit the, our sign ordinances, but just a question regarding, when these signs go up, do, does the city have any control over public service announcements that can go on them?
The code does allow for specific signage on specific signs. And we don't have the staff to drive around and read the signs, especially those that are LED signs, so you've got a changing sign face. We do receive complaints once in a while, and then we typically get ahold of the owner of the sign, and they've been really good about complying until enough time goes by that no one's looking, and then it seems to go back to the, so it's the beast of the animal. Advertisement is, there's a lot of money in it. If you're a sign company, that's your bread and butter. And our biggest problem with LED signs is the signs can be static or scrolling, but not flashing. And we have a lot of folks that just can't help it, they're flashing. And those are some that if staff sees them, will reach out, because it's an irritant that we don't abide by the rules.
So there is no way, there's no compensation to the city if, I mean, they're not taxed for these signs? I mean, like the billboards, the billboard, do these billboards get taxed, or?
There's a permit that's needed, but we don't collect, we don't have the ability or the authority at the city to collect a tax on that.
Hmm, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mike Quasny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that I've been noted as a sign Nazi, so to speak. What just came up is why I have concerns is that sometimes the sign companies, they push the limits and cause the problem, and so that's what I have a problem with, the changing signs. And then, once they're caught, then they fix, that's the problem. And so I guess I'll have to continue to try to, in my own part, control that a little bit, but hopefully they realize that they shouldn't break those laws. Couple things that I had, the Coffee with the Planners, is that, what time does it start?
9:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
10:00, all right.
And we serve bagels and coffee.
Okay. Got it on my calendar.
Fully open to the public.
Yep, and I, hopefully we get a lot of public there, because that's what makes the difference, and as was noted with the comprehensive plan here. I'd like to echo the thank you to all the people that were involved in it, and that's what makes our community better, is when we look at things and try to make a plan going down the road. That said, I have a plan that has been put in place. I'm involved with the Ronald McDonald House. We have a groundbreaking October 1st. And for you that don't know about the Ronald McDonald House, it's a great addition to our community for those people that need, in a health crisis, there's a need. And that groundbreaking is October 1st on the corner of Fairmont and Elm, and invite as many people as possible to that. It's a great opportunity to, a great addition to our community. So I wanted to add that little plug in there, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mike. Kelly.
The Coffee with the Planner, is that, you know, if we provide feedback, I, kudos to everybody that put in all the time on the comp plan. It was a massive, massive thing, and we appreciate that. The Coffee with the Planner, are my comments, you know, part of the public record or that just a session, you know? And secondly, I want to voice something, but I don't know if I should, you know, if I'm, as a sitting member of this board, allowed to go to the city council and make public comment during, you know? You know what I mean? I have something to say, and I don't know if this is the place to do it about the comp plan.
I go to the city council and make public comments.
I'm permitted to do that.
Absolutely.
You can absolutely do that.
Okay, then I'll save it.
Absolutely.
I'll save it.
So when you come to Coffee with Planners, if you share comments, we note them, but we don't, and if it's someone that owns an apartment project, we might note that many of the apartment owners thought this was the right number for a manager's office. I mean, we try to keep track of that, but we don't call out anyone by name.
Okay.
But yes, you're a citizen of this community, and you have full right to go to city council, and that is not held against you. I'm, again.
I just want to get the right platform for, you know? I don't, I'm not going to beat anybody up, but I do have some comments on some things. And again, awesome plan. I know how hard everybody worked on this thing, so I'll save it for then.
Yes, and if you do have comments about the comp plan, please reach out to Marlo, and we still have time to make some revisions if needed going into the committee meetings next week.
Okay. Yeah, I submitted some things, probably, I feel a little stronger now about some of them, so maybe I will circle back, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's good to know. I'll be at city council at some point.
I'm just going to say, please do. I'm a big fan of expressing ourselves in that way. Mike Quasny.
I neglected to thank the Eric's for being involved in the comprehensive plan, because you've got a couple good people that have some good knowledge, and thank them for their input.
All right. Anything else from the commission today? Okay. Mike Galher made the motion to adjourn, Vince seconded that motion. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.